It is past the six o'clock hour, so we're going to call to order the regular meeting of the City of Crescent City this July 2nd, 2018. Would you please call the rule?
Yes, Councilmember Greenow.
Here.
Councilmember Short.
Here.
Councilmember Follman.
Here.
Mayor Protamkeim.
Here.
And Mayor Ensor.
I am here. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have anything to report out of closed session?
We do not have anything to report this evening.
All right, very good. We are going to open up general public comment. Any member of the public is invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, the council is not able to undertake extended conversation or discussion about non-agendized items, but those items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include being placed on a future agenda. All comments should be directed towards the entire council, and any comments that are not at the microphone will be out of order and not part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your residency, either city or county, for the record, and limit public comment to three minutes. You'll also be given an opportunity on agendized items to speak again. Do we have any public comment this evening? All right, seeing no general public comment, we will move on. We don't have any ceremonial items tonight, and we also do not have any reports and presentations. We do have several items on our consent calendar. I will identify those. Special council meeting minutes from June 12th, 2018. The warrants claim lists for May 26th through June 22nd, 2018. The payroll report for June 9th through June 15th and June 23rd for 2018. Resolution 2018-34, approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Crescent City and the Crescent City Police Officers Association. Resolution 2018-35, approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Crescent City and the Crescent City Management Association, Employees Association. Number six, approved $200 per month increase from the $1,300 a month to $1,500 per month for the camp host services at Shoreline RV Park. Number seven, a two-year agreement to perform water testing services for Pelican Bay State Prison. Eight, a 2017-18 budget adjustment for property tax in lieu of VLF. Number nine, consolidation of the general municipal election for 2018 coming up here in November. Ten, a grant application for rec management services for the Crescent City Police Department. Eleven, Pebble Beach Drive pedestrian and bicycle improvement project and the attached resolution for with that. And number twelve, agreement between the County of Dellenart and the City of Crescent City for roadwork on city facilities. Is there any questions regarding our lengthy consent calendar items this evening?
Move to approve consent.
I have a motion to approve consent. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment on any of the items on our consent calendar? All right, seeing no public comment, then we'll bring it back to the council, and would you please pull the vote?
Yes. Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Mayor Protamkeim?
Yes.
And Mayor Ensor.
Yes, very good. We will move on to public hearings. We have one public hearing tonight. It's number 13 on your agenda, public hearing to adopt ordinance number 803 cannabis for personal or medical use. Mr. Ware.
Thank you, Mayor Ensor. This is the ordinance that was introduced at the last council meeting, and we had some extended discussion on. However, it was approved to be brought back just as is, and so that is what's before the council tonight. So if you have any technical questions, Mr. Taylor, our community development director is in the audience and can help answer those.
So I just wanted to ask, we did have a pretty lengthy discussion about the greenhouse idea, and would it be possible, I know we're voting on the ordinance obviously, but would it be possible to give staff a recommendation that they come back with something dealing with the greenhouse question that we had?
So, you know, like you said, what's before the council tonight is to adopt the ordinance. If you wanted to revise the greenhouse portion of it, I guess the actual would be to not adopt and then have staff bring back an amended ordinance, which we would then have to go through the process again.
Well, what I'm saying is could we approve it tonight, and then staff come back with that adaptation to it?
Like addendum?
An addendum later.
Sure, just with some future options, and then we can receive direction and then bring back a revised ordinance at a later date. Basically putting into place the personal use for cannabis as is, and then revising it, possibly in the future.
Okay. Any other thoughts about that idea? Short, do you have any thoughts one way or the other?
I don't have any problem with that at all. I wondered if we could maybe see if there was any problems that stemmed from the way we are going to adopt it tonight, maybe take an action at that time. I don't know if Mr. Greenow would be minimal to that.
You're saying not adopt it?
No, go ahead and adopt it as is.
Okay.
But then, find it, I mean, once it's implemented, and we see if there's any, see if maybe the way it's written will work out just fine. Maybe it won't, maybe we'll discover some problems with greenhouse issue the way it is, and then we'll need to amend it. Or depending on what Mr. Taylor and staff think, maybe we need to amend it right away. But I'm being able to both options.
Okay. Mr. Follman, any thoughts?
Very open to having staff come back and talking to us about the greenhouse issue, but I mean, as it stands, you know, this is the ordinance in front of us. I think we should adopt it tonight and, you know, have them come back. And as I'm sitting here thinking, like, this isn't going to be the last conversation we have on how to govern cannabis within city limits. So plenty of things are going to crop up, and let's come back with greenhouses.
Okay. Protamkeim?
I'm a minimal.
Okay, well, in some ways, it's sort of like what we did with the streets and sidewalks thing. We approved the ordinance with the instructions to staff to bring back. In that case, we actually put a timeframe on it. I don't know if you've started the clock on that or not, but we did put a timeframe of August for that. I don't know that we have to put a timeframe on this, but if there is consensus on the part of the council that we would like that option vetted out, I certainly would be willing to, since I'm the one that pushed in some ways, I would certainly be willing to work with Mr. Taylor and talk about some of that and bring it back to the council as staff has time to do that, not overload them right now in doing that. But we can, if that's the consensus in the council to want to look at that option.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I see why we need to put a time-
ordinance 803, we had a motion and a second, and we had taken public comment. Still don't have any public comment, doesn't appear, and so I will bring it back. And if you would, did we poll the vote? Did I already get that? Okay, I wasn't sure where we got when the screen kind of went and we pixelated colors. I'm easily distracted. So, squirrel, yeah. All right, so we will move on. That is the only public hearing that we have for tonight. I've got to get all the way back to the beginning of our agenda. And under new business, we have the number 14, Front Street Pedestrian Improvement and Roadway Revitalization Project. Mr. Ware.
Yep, we do.
Wow.
This is moving too.
It is. I remember that.
Yep, you remember this?
In the assessment table.
I do.
Yes, so I sort of quoted this whole thing, is that, plus we've been around a lot. So this PowerPoint was created in approximately 2012, I believe, via reservations from the planning commission.
As well as the city council. So to refresh everyone's memory on the Front Street project, which is what we will be applying for grant funding for, we're going to run through this PowerPoint. So Front Street itself obviously needs a lot of work. The main problem with Front Street as it stands now is the road structural section is not adequate, and so that's what keeps failing. It's built on unconsolidated sandy fill. There are large trees underneath that we discovered when we did this whole design, and so really what needs to happen is we need to rebuild that entire structural section. But rather than just doing that, with this project, we also took a look at Front Street as a whole design concept. And so that's where we took what it was, which was built for the 1900s, the 1920s, the 1930s, when we had, you know, the docks that were active, and you had a large fishing fleet, and they were building the breakwater, and they had a, you know, a concrete batch plant in the middle of Beachfront Park where they were batching the dolos and the tetrapods. And it was really an industrial road, and so you had this five-lane road that was servicing that. Now you don't have that anymore. Now it is more of, it's a collector's street, but it's more of a tourist-friendly collector's street. It's really what we wanted to be, pedestrian-friendly, built around Beachfront Park, which wasn't there when this whole thing was first started. So what we did is we took a look as a whole and said, okay, what do we want this street to look like? And that's where we wanted to separate the vehicular traffic from the pedestrian. So now instead of five lanes, you have two lanes in either way for the vehicles, and then you have multiple areas of parking for the pedestrians, separated by a pedestrian fence. We have kind of a themed approach where you have where the redwoods meet the sea. So as you look at this, it's going to incorporate public art all along it as well. And so you start out in the redwoods down by the highway, and as you work your way down towards the B Street roundabout, it would culminate in a breaching whale. So it has that sense of context. It also has a meander in it, so you're not just dealing with a straight street that, you know, somebody once said to me, you can land a 747 down. This sort of has a meander to it, so you kind of bring the street and the downtown into the park. Then you also give some landscape areas right by the Surf Hotel there on Eighth Street, so you can try to soften that large concrete building. So that's a project that we have been contemplating, that we've been looking at, that we've had on the wall now for unfortunately seven years. We've tried multiple times, you know, going before the city council and applying for grants. We've applied for multiple ATP grants. We've applied for pedestrian improvement grants in regard to development of projects, and just constantly looking at different ways that we can fund this. We've been able to pick a few of the components off, so that was the other thing we looked at, is how do we phase this? Because this is a large-scale project, and you know, the last time we did an actual update to the estimate, it's been several years now. I'm working on one right now. I don't have the numbers up to date right now, but it was about a 12 to 14 million dollar project four or five years ago. So how do you fund that? Well, we're looking at the different pieces. Okay, can we break up the pedestrian and go for a grant with just pedestrian? Can we break out the sewer, which we did? And so we did that with the CWG grant. So we were able to replace the sewer line, which goes right underneath B Street. So that portion's taken care of. We have a grant application out right now in regard to CWG, in which we're trying to pick off the storm drain. So if we can pick the storm drain off, maybe we can get a piece of this funded. But what's before you tonight is what's called a Build Grant. And so the Build Grant really replaces a grant that was previously called the Tiger Funds. It's a federal grant that is for large-scale projects to enhance transportation-type facilities. This is a very competitive grant. So it was brought to our attention. We've looked at it in the past. We looked at it when it was Tiger. You know, it was brought to my attention, I think by Mayor Ensor as well, that, hey, this grant's out there. Have you thought about it? Looking at our staff time and what it would take to put this grant application together, it really wasn't feasible for us with our current workload. However, that's where community partnerships come in. And Elk Valley Rancheria then approached us and said, you know, this grant's been on our radar as well, and as a tribal entity, they get consideration, and by them being a partner in this or a joint applicant, then that will increase our competitiveness substantially on this grant. So we sat down with them. It was our finance director, Linda Lever, myself, Bridget Lacy, members from the Elk Valley Rancheria, and started looking at the different components, looking at the timeline. This grant has to be submitted by, I think it's July 18th, and there's a lot of different components. So they are very interested in doing that. We said, we still don't think that we, as Crescent City staff, would have the resources to put this grant application together. And that's where, as a partner, they really stepped up again. They said, we'll hire a consultant. So they're going to hire a consultant for the city. I think it's about $10,000 or so, somewhere in that range, for this consultant with, well, the transportation company is LSC Transportation. They're an expert in writing these type of grants. They've written Tiger grants in the past, and so now they're on board, and they're working towards writing that application. So that is how really this became possible, is through these community partnerships. We're excited about this. We think we will have a competitive shot. Still very competitive. Like you say, 150 million is all for the state of California, but if we can show the partnership, that's where I think we really have our edge, plus a great project as well. So that's the Front Street project. You know, these are just some of the older PowerPoints that sort of show some of the perspectives of it. You know, that's got you showing the meandering of the street coming through, some of the different art that we can have as we go, as we work our way down through the park, some of the different type of vendors and different things like that that we can have in the meander. The street signs, which we already have in place, redoing the pedestrian facilities with the boardwalk stamped sidewalk, the separation between the pedestrian and the street itself with a fence that has a sense of context of local art. You can see a better shot there. Possibly, you know, as you work your way into the oceans, you know, some makeshift, you know, crab pots or whatever sort of art-type features we want to put in it, and then hopefully the culmination there at B Street with that breaching whale. And that's kind of showing the whale migration that you could have in some of the other medians as you work your way down. So that in a nutshell is really what we're asking for, is just approval to submit this grant. At this point, the only cost to the city is just in staff time. But again, I think that even if we're not successful, we will now have a grant application that we can use in other grants as well as we're going for this.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Ware? Mr. Follman?
Nope.
No? Mr. Green?
I don't have any questions. I think it'd be awesome if we could get this funded.
So we have a quick deadline, July 18th, you said?
19th.
19th?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So you think, based on a lot of the work that you already have done?
Yes.
You're just sort of resurrecting?
So we have the traffic data. We have written those other grants, so they're going to try to compile those along with LSC's expert, you know, advice and being able to compile this. We think we can do it. The one piece that we're going to have to put together as city staff is going to be the engineering estimate. So that's going to take a little bit of my time, but it's time to update it anyway. So we're going to need to look at phasing, because that's going to be a part of it. We might not be able to get the whole piece done, but how, if they can fund a little bit, which is our top priority? How much is that going to cost? And then so on and so forth, all the way down.
What a great opportunity for the city.
It is, and like you said.
The entire community.
Yeah, unbelievable as far as the commitment from Elk Valley Rancheria. Can't say enough about the partnership.
Relationships matter.
Yeah. Well, and I think that it just goes to show the value of establishing the Indian Community Block Development Grant with the fire hall. We've already have this established partnership, and we saw the success out of that and how that benefits our entire community. And so as Heidi just said, it's about building relationships, and once you've built those relationships, then the opportunities come. And I, you know, I knew when I got the announcement of the transition from Tiger to Build in April, that this was a long shot, but the Elk Valley's willingness to come to the table changes everything. The interesting thing about the new Build program is they expanded the merit criteria. The merit criteria previously for Build was much smaller. One of the key merit components in the new Build program is partnerships. I mean, we're starting our application on a partnership base, which already gives us points ahead of someone who's doing it as an independent application. You know, we just look at the merit criteria, safety, quality of life, innovation, partnership, infrastructure, investment. Infrastructure investment was not part of the merit criteria in the old Tiger program. So I'm really excited about the possibility, and even if we don't get it this time around, I think we're laying a great foundation. So very much appreciate you guys working together on this. Okay, so we, you need, we have a resolution to do the application. Do we have any public comment on this resolution to submit this application? Okay, then I'll bring it back to the council. Closed public comment. We have resolution 2018-35 to submit a better utilizing investments to leverage development joint application with Elk Valley Rancheria to fund the Front Street Pedestrian Improvement and Roadway Revitalization Project.
The agenda has 2018-33, so is this 33 or 35?
In the staff report, it says 35.
Yeah.
In the resolution?
It says 33.
Says 33.
Resolution 33.
The resolutions that are correct. All right. So then if somebody would make the motion to approve Resolution 2018-33.
Move to approve.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes. Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Mayor Protamkeim?
Yes.
And Mayor Ensor.
Yes. Good luck, Crescent City. Good luck, yeah. That's fantastic. Good news. All right, moving back to our agenda here, we have last item, item 15, Phase Two of the 101 Wayfinding Encroachment Package. Mr. Ware?
All right, thank you, Mayor Ensor, members of the council. So I believe it was just at our last council meeting that we asked the council to approve a downtown district resolution. So that set forth what we could actually say on the signs. This then went before the planning commission on June 14th, I believe, and so now we are back at the council just to do one last run-through. We're actually going to go through each of the signs and get the final approval from the council. Now, all that being said, this is a very tedious process. Caltrans is very stringent on what these signs can say and can't say, so we'll run through it. If there's any major objections, we'll go back to the table and we'll work with them. If not, then we can get this approved, and we'll be able to submit for our incremental permit.
So just as an incentive for all of us, everything that we're going to see, Caltrans has agreed to.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes. We have worked through multiple phone conversations and details, so that's where.
Great, thank you. All right, let's go.
Okay, so again, wayfinding signs, you know, Phase One, this was the PowerPoint for the planning commission. These ones are already in. Saw those. This is the Phase Two, which is the highway, and then Phase Three, which is the next phase, which we have currently in the budget. So I don't know if we'll be able to get them all in, but these are the locations for some more local socks. So as soon as we get the highway signs off and running, we'll turn our attention to these and get that presented and ordered. So wayfinding sign number one, which is, which will be located on Highway 101 southbound. It's in between Third and Fourth are coming towards Third Street. That'll say downtown to your right, coastal access straight ahead. You have wayfinding sign number 31, which is located, again, heading southbound down 101. This one's between Fifth and Sixth. So you have museum, you have coastal access, and then you have the lighthouse, which would be straight ahead. We have the next sign, which is located on M Street. So the order's a little funny how they numbered these. So this, you're heading northbound, and you're between Fourth and Fifth. So at that point, you'd be directed to turn left down Fifth Street to go to the museum, to go, you know, coastal access or the lighthouse. And then we have, again, M Street, so Highway 101, northbound, in between Second and Third, and that's where you'll see coastal access is ahead or downtown is to your left. And we're flipped back around. We're southbound now, in between Second and Front. This is right before you get to Front Street, so we have tourist info, which is one of those, the verbiage that we had to work closely with Caltrans on. That is what they say you must have, is tourist info. We have coastal access and lighthouse when you turn down Front Street.
Okay, so this is between Second?
This is, yeah.
Between Second and?
This is, yes, between Second and Front Street. You can see it's a- This is, yes, between Second and, and Front Street. You can see it's a, it's only about sixty-five feet past the intersection of Second Street. So plenty of time to note to make that right-hand turn.
Will this have any impact on the Parks sign that's already there? That will stay up, correct?
The Parks sign that you can kind of see in the, in the lower picture there, is that, is that the one or which one?
No, they, they actually have a Redwood Parks-
No.
Redwood State and National-
That will not have any effect on their sign. Some of these other signs that you see here, the all, the, you know, the, the little signs, we're gonna relocate those so they're actually down Front Street.
Sure.
So we can clean up some of the sign clutter.
Okay.
So then this is, now you're heading northbound. You've just made it through the first turn, and this is what will direct you to take a left on Front Street with that same signage, tourist info, coastal access, and lighthouse. So we're a little bit south. We're, uh, we are just north of Elk Valley now, right before you get to the S curve. So as you're coming down from southbound, you see tourist info, you'll see coastal access and lighthouse. Stepping back yet again, now you're just south of Elk Valley. So again, you would see that tourist info, coastal access, lighthouse. And then we have one more back at the, uh, at Citizens Dock. So just when you get past the harbor, that's when you'll start to see tourist info, coastal access, lighthouse, and you'll see that three times as you work your way into town, before you hit Front Street to finally tell you to turn left, and then you'll hit the downtown signs and So now we're back up. We're on Highway one oh one northbound. This is just north of, of Eighth. So basically, this is what you're gonna see if you turn left on Ninth. So you have coastal access, scenic overlook, which is the Brother Jonathan, and then lighthouse. The Brother Jonathan historic sign with the bear will not be replaced. So you'll have this, and then you'll also have the bear sign.
Oh, I see.
Flipping around on, yeah, you can see it on this one here.
Yeah.
So flipping around, this is coming up, up northbound, just, you know, head, or heading southbound, just right by Burger King right there. You'll see that tourist info is straight ahead, or you have the coastal access or scenic overlook to turn down Ninth And then again, you have your signs sort of leading up to that. So this one's just north of Cooper Avenue, and again, tourist info, coastal access, lighthouse, directing you into town. And that'll, that's the furthest north sign that, that we have. So this is what was presented to Caltrans. They have agreed to this. They've agreed to the sign size, the, the area of the logo for the lighthouse, the colors. At this point, we are, we are finally through that process. Uh, it was quite the process. Caltrans was good to work with, and I even had an opportunity to talk to Senator McGuire, who was very much in favor of this particular project, and, uh, the Caltrans District One Director. So it's been a good process.
That's awesome.
So we have nothing north of the Y?
On, at this point, no.
Okay.
No, let's hear, we'll go back to the, uh... So that's your, that's your furthest north.
So there is one sign.
That's Cooper.
That's Cooper.
That's Cooper.
Oh, there's, there's the one, there's the one. Okay.
Are you thinking trying to capture those southbound?
I, I just, I just wondered.
You know, and we could. We could go and try to add another sign at a later, you know, continue with this, and then try to add one more. The city limits stops right there at Wilson. If you're on that, that north-
On the inside.
On the inside, which is heading, you know, southbound, which is the direction that you want to be heading. So that's, that would be your last chance to really have any additional signs.
Okay.
I, uh, I really appreciate all the work that you have put into this. I know that there's a lot of businesses downtown that are just jumping up and down with excitement over this because a green sign, a brown sign, you know, all these different signs, and now you're gonna have one cohesive message. And they, they're beautiful, first of all, and, um, they're, they just do a fantastic job of highlighting our city. So thank you. Thank you for all your back and forth with Caltrans over this.
No, it's been good, and I'd like to give a lot of credit to Nicole Sutterfield, our, you know, our new project engineering manager. She's done a great job as, uh, staying after this and, and keeping the ball rolling. And so, yeah, I think it's another step forward, and so we're excited about it as well.
I, I think that people are going to be shocked once they see them.
Yeah.
Because the scale of these compared to what's already up, and the signs that we have up are, are pretty good size.
Mm-hmm.
But these are, these are big signs. Uh, I mean, you see the, the, the image there with the, with the shadow cutout of, of the, of the person beside it. This is not a, you're not gonna miss these things. Um, so I, I think that people are gonna, are really gonna be surprised, and I think very, very pleased.
Well, the other ones are a single pole-
Right.
And this has a double, so it's quite, quite a bit larger.
Yeah, very good. All right. Any other questions?
Tell Nikki thank you from us.
Yes.
She did a great job.
After we get the approval, what's the timeframe on these, actually getting these up? I understand it's staff time, so it's-
But we're pretty, we're pretty far along right now. So we've, in fact, we've already started to reach out to sign manufacturers to see if they'd be interested in providing us a quote. Uh, you know, Caltrans, we've worked through the process, so that should be a lot more streamlined than what it would normally be. You know, we're talking with them four weeks-ish to get the encroach permit. At that time, we can start to gather quotes. Uh, typically, it's about another, say, six to eight weeks to actually get the signs fabricated is what we've experienced. So we're hopeful for October-ish, November-ish, something like that, to, uh, actually receive them and, and start the install process.
Okay. You have a question?
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
All right, thank you.
Good stuff.
All right.
That's exciting.
Any, any public comment on the, uh, wayfinding encroachment package, the Phase Two? Seeing done, we'll close public comment, and then I'll bring it back to the council for, uh, for action regarding the, uh, wayfinding Phase Two encroachment package.
I move that we approve the wayfinding Phase Two encroachment package.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second. Save a second. All right. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Keim?
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore.
Yes. Very good. All right, we have come to the end of our, uh, regular agenda. Do we have any legislative items that we need to address this evening?
No legislative items.
I will just make one note that, that the, uh, the tax fairness measure that, that we had expressed concern about has actually been removed. Um, now they're, they're focusing their attention in a different direction, but that has been removed for consideration for the November ballot. So that would be the one update, um, that I would give. And it does appear that the, the, the question regarding the repeal of SB one will, in fact, be on the November ballot. And so that may be a discussion that, that we would like to have at a later date, um, because I think we see, we have a project list that's based on that funding that we receive, so.
Well, we, we had discussed, I think, a letter, uh, in opposition to SB one, so if Councilman Short and I, we, we had discussed putting a letter together, so maybe we need to meet and put that together and bring that back for consideration.
I, I think our, our discussion with the letter was in support of that, um, effort to get it on the ballot, and it made it on the ballot, so-
Okay.
I don't, I don't know if you had another thought there on that, or-
Maybe just to support the effort.
We'll have to see where the voters take it now, because it's gonna be on the November ballot, so.
I guess that makes sense.
Yeah, that's too political of a discussion for the council to have. We shouldn't weigh in on referendums and initiatives and stuff. I mean, if it's in the legislature, sure, but it's, yeah, at the ballot at this point.
Do we not have a responsibility for the people that we represent to, to inform them about the impacts of issues that they'll vote on?
That's what I was thinking.
I mean, that would be, that would be the, the question. If, if we represent, uh, the people of Crescent City, do we not have a responsibility to, to give them good information and discussion about items that, that will be placed before them in November, and so that they can make, um, good educated decisions on, on the things that, that are before them? Because I think it's, it's clear that, that, that there's not a, there's not a consensus about that issue on this council.
No.
And so I, I think that, I think that, uh, I, I tend to agree with Mr. Greenow that, that maybe a, another discussion about that may not be a, may not be a bad thing for us to have. So-
I'm, I'm not sure that people fully understand the, um, local projects that would be affected by losing that.
Well, again, and I, we, we really can't take an extended time on this, but I, I think it's, I think it's worthy of, of us having a good conversation about it again. I, I don't think, and I think that, but I do think we need to be prepared for that and, and have, you know, we don't need, it's not gonna help our public if, if one of us says, "Oh, I like it," and the other says, "I don't." That doesn't help them. We need good facts and good information, and, um, I would certainly be happy to reach out with staff to talk about the project aspect of it. And I would certainly appreciate the opportunity for you guys, you know, if you express some concerns about that, and I appreciate that, of the overall tax implications of how you feel that that may not serve our community and-
Costs have gone up drastically since it's been passed. So I mean, it's, it is affecting people.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes.
Well, we, we have some time before November. We will, I will, I will talk with staff about the, how, where we might find that here in the next month or two, and we'll do that.
All right. Thank you.
All right, you bet. Anything else from a, from a legislative standpoint? All right. Mr. Weir, you have, uh, anything else that you'd like to, to provide us with this evening?
Just a quick little update on staffing. So we have had a resignation, uh, around the city. So Elizabeth Williams, who is our Public Works and Community Development Director, Community Development Department Office Technician, has, has resigned, and so we're currently flying her position. And at this point, we're working with Express Services to see if we can't find a, a temporary, uh, employee for, uh, for the short term, because it's a pretty critical position for the public. So we're hoping to have that person on board soon, and, uh, and that recruitment's gonna be ongoing. And then the other report is just a, just a real brief report on Japan, and so I'm, you know, won't be able to do it, uh, justice, but I did want to thank the council for allowing, uh, allowing staff to attend that trip. I can't say enough about the benefits of going to a community like Rikuzun Takada, seeing and seeing the, the true effects of what it is like to experience a nearshore tsunami. It's like nothing, you know, you can ever imagine. Uh, it is, it's unbelievable, and this was seven years after the fact. So to be able to sit down with their staff, to talk to them about their emergency management, to talk about what they're doing, to actually be there and see it is invaluable. Um, I'm excited for a lot of the things that will be outcomes, you know, in our lean emergency management, but also in regard to the, the commerce and, you know, the cultural arts and this whole sister city experience. I just wanted to, to pass my gratitude on to the council. In my personal opinion, very worthwhile and something that this community will hopefully benefit from for years to come.
All right, uh, council. Uh, Mr. Grant?
Well, I did not have any meetings since our last council meeting, um, but I do have something to leave with the public. Uh, on this day in seventeen seventy-six, uh, I just wanted to read a quote from John Adams. It said, and it was a quote to his wife, uh, in a letter, I guess. And he says, "The second day of July seventeen seventy-six will be the most memorable epica in the history of America. I am apt to believe that it will be celebrated by succeeding generations as the great anniversary festival. I ought to be commemor-" it ought to be commemorated as the Day of Deliverance by solemn acts of devotion to God Almighty. It ought to be solemnized with pomp and parade, with stews, games, sports, guns, bells, bonfires, and illustrations from one end of this continent to the other, from this time forward forevermore." So I hope that everyone will join me this week and, uh, celebrate our nation's founding and the freedoms that we have, and the sacrifices that were given and on our behalf, so.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Short?
That was great, Jason. Thank you for that. Um, the only, uh, the only comments I had to make were in, uh, in relation to the Japan trip also. Um, uh, I can't say enough about the reception we got from the people there, their endless friendly demeanor that, that we were met with everywhere we went. Um, what we learned there, uh, their commerce, their, their fisheries, um, the, the sitting down in a room and discussing, uh, emergency preparedness and, and housing and, and, uh, not ha- uh, finance and education and, and having an interpreter at each table to, to facilitate that was just invaluable to me. And how they have changed the way they, uh, they even talk about how they're prepared. And, and their, uh, their word is tsunami tendenko, and that is, uh, basically revolves around save yourself. Um, it was just, uh, kind of sobering how, how we need to change our philosophy and not talk about the event that could happen in the next thirty years. We need to talk about the event that could happen this afternoon, anytime. So, um, it's gonna be, uh... It's gonna be a challenge to, to educate the public in that, to, uh, to coin Samantha Fuller's phrase, "We need to overcome the uneducatedness." Thank you, Sam, for that.
Thank you, Sam.
I'm gonna stick with that. Uh, but we will. I, I truly believe we will. Uh, I think our family, our families that are here in our communities are, are pretty well-prepared for, uh, tsunami response, but, um, I think especially after, after this, uh, seeing what their community has gone through, uh, I think we can do better. Um, we talk about, something we think about is, uh, in our emergency plans is, uh, it's something that people hate to say, but acceptable losses is a term that's used sometimes, and, uh, that's a terrible thought. And they don't, they don't think that way there. They talk about tendenko and get everybody to safety. Um, and I think that's just a, a great way to, to, uh, approach that. Also look forward to, uh, the education aspects of this. Um, the Heart Japan Club, um, we had a, a young people's, uh, group put on a show with drums, and if you've ever seen, uh, I forget the, the, the name, the style of these drums. It was just powerful, major heartbeat in your chest.
Taiko.
Yes, thank you.
Taiko drums.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, it was an amazing performance, and I thought if they could come here and teach our young kids at the high school to, to do that, uh, that show, it was just, just incredible to... And that's just one, one thing. Uh, there was a young ladies group that did a, uh, choreographed, uh, dance, and they made a, a Japanese calligraphy drawing on this great, big, huge, uh, piece of canvas. And it was just, just encouraging to think that they could come here and, and teach our kids something else. So, um, I won't belabor this anymore, but, uh, I really enjoyed the trip. It was, uh, it was just great to see their recovery. Uh, interesting to note, some, some little things. When, when you ask about, uh, how many casualties there were, they still don't list the missing with those lost. And here we are, seven years after the fact, and it's just kind of, uh, it was, it was just interesting that they, they, uh, they don't put that together yet. Um, so anyway, they're, they're recovering well. It's a impressive construction project they have going. Um, Eric, can I kind of try to estimate, and they kind of confirmed what, they moved twenty million cubic yards of a mountain and built up their city. And it's still in progress. They're, they're still doing it, and they're building a two-kilometer-long seawall that's just, it's, I mean, we've seen pictures from the past delegations, but it's still under construction. Uh, it's pretty, pretty amazing stuff, and some amazing people. So we're treated very well, and I, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Follman?
I attended the Tractor Supply Company pre-showing on six twenty-two, twenty eighteen. Very much like to welcome the Tractor Supply Company to City of Crescent City. They're open for business now. And then, um, the following week, I stopped by the Youth Training Academy and had a chance to talk with our young people about some of the issues facing this community. You know, we got a lot of bright young people here that are doing a lot of spectacular things. You know, Sam Fuller definitely one of them. And the Youth Training Academy, it's an opportunity for people to really get work experience and get experience in this community, doing something that they're not going to find anywhere else. And, um, very much a product of building healthy communities and the effort that they do every summer with that academy. You know, these are folks that they don't really want to move away. They don't want to live some big life in the city. They appreciate it here, and they're saying with building healthy communities is, "I heart this place because I make it great." And I like that's the spirit that's continuing with Youth Training Academy, is young people that want to make this place great. So just hoping that they get the education and skills they need and they can open the businesses that they were talking about opening and solving the problems they were talking about solving. And that's all I got.
All right, Protem Kime?
I haven't, uh, I haven't been doing much of anything lately, apparently. Um, I, uh, have a bunch of meetings coming up later this week, but, uh, I just want to say I really enjoyed all of your pictures from Japan and thank you all for your sentiments. It's, uh, it's, it's great. I can't wait to hear more. Um, and, uh, I, I really appreciate the dedication that you guys took in, in this trip. There was a lot, there was a lot to do. So I will look forward to, um, the fourth. There's a lot going on downtown. Everybody's painted their windows and had a little competition to bring some, some downtown pride. And, uh, I saw the triplicate out today, and they were taking pictures of all the different windows. The, I think they're going to announce the, the winner this week, I believe. Um, anyway, I look forward to seeing everybody celebrating and enjoying, enjoying the fireworks.
So the festivities don't end on Wednesday, though, do they?
They do not.
There's actually something happening on Friday, isn't there?
All week long. That would be live from downtown.
Culminating with live from downtown on, on Friday night.
Live from downtown. Red, white, and bruise.
There you go.
Downtown.
Very good. Looking forward to it.
Yeah.
Prior to leaving for Japan, I did have, uh, another visitor bureau meeting. We are working through with, uh, our, uh, consultant from, um, with our new branding strategy, so we've got us a first look at, at their, uh, their ideas. And the committee, um, sent them back with some of our ideas, and I'm looking forward to, to being able to share that with you guys soon. Uh, I, I do appreciate the investment, um, of being able to lead another delegation to Japan. Very much appreciate the, uh, the triplicate sending Tony Reed. Um, I think that, that our community has had an opportunity to get a glimpse, a better glimpse, uh, of what this sister city's all about through his articles and photographs. And, uh, very much appreciate that, that commitment.
If I could interject.
Sure.
I don't know if you're, Tony, I don't know if your boss watches this video, but you are the hardest-working dude I have seen. You, you worked your tail off when we were in Japan, and I really appreciated that because you documented it well.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, and, uh, you know, there's, there's, there's so many things that, that I think that we have to build on, going back all the way, um, to that first group of, of people from Delano County and the students who, uh, returned, uh, Komome, all the way up to, uh, this month. And I think that, that beginning to, bringing all of those people together to start talking about the long-term strategies of, of how we can use what we are learning, um, to benefit our, our community. And I know that there, there are some who struggle with being able to see the value. And I think it's up to us, and, uh, Tony even mentioned it in one of his articles, of, of the fact that, that we need to be held accountable to, to show the connection and the value. And I think that that's our responsibility. There certainly were some, some learning lessons for, for all of us and some challenging things for all of us, including some disagreements about how we should handle things. And, uh, and I think those are valuable learning lessons. Um, uh, there's, uh, there's nothing that, that, that prepares you better than to be able to be in an open forum where you can say anything you want, because in that situation, uh, you really find out, uh, some of the issues that we need to address here so that we can be the very best leaders, uh, possible for this community. Also very much appreciated having Nancy Sander as a representative from the California Redwood Art Association. I think that that connection and being able to build other connections, uh, in our community is going to be very, very valuable going into the future, especially in being able to provide opportunities, uh, for students and connecting art and education. So there's, there's just so many positives out of all of that, that, uh, that I hope that our community, um, can embrace and that we can do a good job of, of sharing that, that journey with them. Did come back and have had a couple of meetings, attended a global, global leadership luncheon, and, uh, look forward to the opportunity maybe of sharing that with some other leaders here in our community. Had a tri-agency meeting, and, uh, while I wasn't able to be here for the, uh, the preview opening of Tractor Supply, I was down there, uh, Saturday morning, and we had a lot of people, uh, in, in the store. It was good to see, it's good to see that store open and running and appreciate Mr. Taylor working through all that. It took a long time to get all that done, but you see the, another good example of what happens when, um, when our great city staff stays on top of stuff and good things happen. So, uh, that said, have a very safe Fourth of July, be responsible. Remember, there are cer-- there are reasons that things are illegal. Um, so when you're tempted to do things that, that you know you're not supposed to do, uh, as, as mayor, I'm just going to tell you, please don't. Be safe, have a great time, um, take advantage of all the different things that are going to be going on in, in the next, uh, several days, and especially enjoy family and friends who will be joining us, uh, over this week. And we will see you all on Monday, July sixteenth. We're joined.